Test, test, nope.
I'll tell you something about that. When we have time. Welcome, everybody. I would now like to call the August 22nd, 2023 Longmont City Council Regular Session to order. The meeting is being, you can see it livestream at the city's YouTube channel. You can also see it at the longmontpublicmedia.org/watch or on Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Mayor Beck.
Here.
Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters. Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Yuval Korn.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This city council passed a land acknowledgement that I would like to read, and we should be reading it or at least have it posted at every meeting. And here it is. We acknowledge that Longmont sits on the traditional territory of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, Ute, and other indigenous peoples. We honor the history and the living and spiritual connection that the first peoples have with this land. It is our commitment to face the injustices that happened when the land was taken and to educate our communities, ourselves, and our children to ensure that these injustices do not happen again. As a reminder to the public, anyone wishing to speak at first call public invited to be heard will need to add his or name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first call public invited to be heard. And only residents of Longmont and city of Longmont employees will be, can speak at the first call public invited to be heard. Others, excuse me, others outside of the city who are not residents of Longmont and speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during final call public invited to be heard. Anyone wishing to speak on second reading or public hearing items are asked to add their name to the speaker list for each particular item. And each speaker has three minutes, and please state your name and address. Can I have a motion to approve the August 8th regular session minutes?
I move the August 8th regular session minutes.
Is there any discussion or comments about these minutes? Seeing none, let's vote. It isn't coming up for me, so which one? Oh, I'm sorry. So it hasn't come up. Let's do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. And now we are at agenda revisions and submissions of documents. Do any councilor members have documents that they would like to submit? Councilor Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Beck. I don't have a document, but in terms of directions to staff.
Okay.
Is this the appropriate time?
Yes, it is.
I need to ask a question before making a motion because the motion may not be necessary based on the answer to the question. Is that acceptable?
Of course.
So Harold, you're not surprised by the question I'm going to ask. I've received correspondence. I've shared that correspondence with you. I think other council members have received either the same or similar correspondence from property owners who have an interest in developing their land and understand the land. In order to do that, they're going to get, they're going to need a variance from our 150-foot setback in the context of the SES, right? The Sustainability Evaluation System, and whether or not what they propose to do or what the impacts would be on people, planet, and profit, right? So if I roll the clock back a couple of years, I recall sitting on that side of the dais and making a motion that if there's ever a variance request, it needs to be resolved here, not somewhere else in terms of the decision-making authority in the city. We also reviewed the kind of the final version of the SES and the red, yellow, green zones and the idea of nexus and how critical the relationship is between people, planet, and profit and decisions we might make, all that stuff, right? What we, and so on my motion, a council, that council approved, this A council being the decision-making body, if there's a variance request. I remember at the time talking about the need for clarity in terms of criteria, that a property owner who wanted to make a request ought to be clear, they ought to be clear on the criteria we would use under those kind of three categories or the triple bottom line. And then we didn't do that, right? And I'm wondering why we didn't. Then I went back and looked. When did we make that decision? It was in June of 2020, and the world was in a strange place, as was the city in June of 2020. So not surprising that there were some things loose ends maybe that we left undone. But now we have property owners who would like to develop land, understand, they're not arguing about the setbacks, the importance of protecting environment, or riparian corridors, but a question whether or not this property or this project would be in a yellow zone rather than green zone, and whether or not the city would consider, even with environmental studies that would come along with a request, accounts, a request for a variance from a property owner without having to go through the whole process, DRC, preparation and presentation to P and Z, before it gets here, which would take probably two years and a quarter million dollars, right? So on the motion back in 2020, now it's really clear, we should have finished, we should have followed up with criteria process because now we have property owners who are looking at, based on what they're understanding, is two years and a quarter million dollars, give or take, even to get the question in front of council, right? That's a long way to go to get to the question. Do I, do you need direction to bring, whether it's the handbook, the development handbook, the ordinances, which I think is chapter 15 of the code, you know, those issues back to us for clarity on criteria and process, so it doesn't take two years and a quarter million dollars to get the answer whether or not we would even be eligible to develop a piece of property? Or do you need a motion, direction from staff to bring that, the ordinances and/or handbook issues back?
I would say if council wants us to look at that, I would need direction to bring a solution back to this particular question. I know Joni has had a similar question come to her, and she has some meetings set with our special counsel. It's because it was created as a variant that sets many of these processes in play. And so I know she's digging in to get some questions answered, but in terms of bringing something back to you, yes, I would need a motion and direction from council.
Thanks. Then I'm going to, I'm going to move that we direct staff to bring ordinances, ordinance, ordinances, and/or handbook sections back to council to review the current requirements and whether or not this council and future councils ought to establish a criteria for decision-making and streamline the process so a property owner doesn't have to be exposed to a quarter million dollars of expense and two years of a wait time to get an answer whether I even be eligible here.
So that motion has been made by Councilor Waters, sent by Councilor Martin, but are there any discussion? I do have a question. Because we have three people on this council that have not been involved in the SES, we need to bring back that SES. Is that part of the manual that you're talking about?
Sure would be. That would have to be in order to deal with these issues.
With an explanation as to what that is all about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that was in there.
I think it's central to, it's central to decision-making. I mean, in terms of a criteria.
I agree. Okay. I just wanted to make it clear that that was part of that whole packet.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not talking about redoing it. I'm talking about how it applies.
Of course.
And how we would use it in terms of, or any council would use it for decision-making. And the clarity I think we owe a property owner who wants to do something, and if they want, especially if they want to do something that produces what we want to see produced or developed in the city.
Okay. Councilor McCoy?
Thank you, Mayor Beck. So just so I'm clear, this is just to bring it back for discussion purposes, not support of it until after the discussion.
You'd have to stay, we'd have to see what, what exists and whether or not we think changes ought to be made, and then we'd give direction.
All right. Thank you.
So Harold, when you said that staff would bring back solution, you used the word "solution." Are we, are you bringing back solutions or options, or how would that work?
Solutions, plural. Options. If should council want to consider this as we bring it back, we would give you different options in terms of how you could handle it.
Okay. Seeing no, no one else in the queue, let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other agenda revisions? Seeing none, we're going to go on to the city manager's report.
No report, Mayor, Council.
All right. We have special reports and presentations. We are now going to have a joint meeting of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and Longmont City Council. Oh, I'm sorry. The city council, it was very, very small on there.
Yeah, it's embedded in there.
Yeah, it's embedded. So the report is for the city council internship program, final presentation. Who are we calling up to do this? Not yet.
Mayor Beck, members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. I'm really proud to introduce you all, although I think you already know them, to our city council interns for this summer. We did have two that had classes and was on vacation, so we are missing two, but we'll put them through a very vigorous presentation later on. So we do have three of the city council interns to go through their experience, and one of our mentors, Carmen Palacios Ramirez, will also speak about her experience. So I'll turn it over to Gustav.
Okay, perfect. Hello, Mayor Beck and members of council. My name is Gustav Coleman, and for the past two months, I have been an intern with the Transportation Department of the city of Longmont. One of the things that I thought was incredibly valuable about this experience is the amount of stuff that I learned. So one of the first things that I learned, and this happened in the first couple of days during onboarding, was everything that the city offers. The city manager took us through a tour of everything that the city had, and then we also toured all of the water waste, or sorry, the water waste treatment plant and then the water providing treatment plant. And there I learned that Longmont's water is so incredibly clean that it's probably cleaner to drink straight from the tap than to use a filter, since the filter will just add more chemicals into it. Another thing that I learned, and this was after onboarding, after I had started the internship, and one of the things that we had to do was interview you about the minimum wage. And about, one of the things that I learned about that is how knowledgeable every single member of council is. When I interviewed Councilwoman Susie Hidalgo Ferring, the amount of questions that she had just about the minimum wage genuinely shocked me, and I wrote like a couple full pages of all the questions that she wanted answered, ranging from stuff that I kind of predicted would be some questions to stuff that I haven't even, that I hadn't even considered. And then another thing that I learned is how much thought is put into these decisions. Before this internship, I had never attended a city council meeting, and seeing you guys debate every single point to its end was very inspiring, and it made me feel more confident in the city that I live in. And to be completely honest, I value the city that I live in even more than I used to before. Now, one of the things that I learned working with the Transportation Department is how involved they are. The first thing that I did for the Transportation Department is I attended a meeting called Commuting Solutions, where there were big people from all around the Transportation Department. The CEO of the RTD program was there. There were some state senators and state council members that were there to talk about some of the laws that were being implemented. And that's just an opportunity that I've never had before, and I doubt I'll ever have again. Well, maybe. I learned so many new, or I met so many new people. And another thing that I learned is how much thought is put into wayfinding itself. So to move on to what my project was with the Transportation Department, I was in charge of inventory and creating wayfinding for Spring Gulch 2 Greenway. Now, the plan for me is I'm going to continue and I'm going to keep doing more of these greenways, but this was the first one. And the first thing I did was I did a couple go-throughs, and I looked at all of the existing wayfinding and all of the existing signage. I documented all of that, and then I went through and I wrote down notes on where more wayfinding was needed. And the process of figuring out where more wayfinding was a lot more intensive than I initially thought it was. I thought, you know, you just go up to an intersection, you look, oh, a sign should go there, and then they put a sign there. But the actual process is a lot more difficult as there's so many different types of intersections and so many different scenarios that you can encounter while setting up wayfinding, which was a genuine challenge for me, but I hope that I did a good job. And on the presentation, you can see sort of a map of what I've done. There's the existing signs that I documented, and then there's the proposed signs that I also documented, and I went out and did field research, took pictures of everything. But my overall experience with this was extremely, extremely positive. Not only did I learn an incredible amount about the city that I live in, I also got to help out with the city that I live in. It was extremely gratifying to be able to do something that felt so incredibly meaningful, especially since on my first go-through, there were two wayfinding signs that I saw. So I really hope that the work that I've been able to do was helpful for the city, and I appreciate everyone here for granting me this opportunity to learn so much about the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Gustav.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Beck. My name is Haley Kroll, and I was in the Longmont Housing for my internship program. I chose housing because I'm interested in real estate. I also liked shows like HGTV. However, I realized housing is a bit more complex than just picking out countertops and carpet. So here's everything I learned, a brief tale of contents. First things I learned is there is a lot of abbreviations in government. They just like to make everything short. So in order to figure out what these people were talking about, I had to learn what these abbreviations were. Some of them were AMI, which is Area Median Income, HUD, which was the Housing and Urban Development, IH for Inclusionary Housing, and DOH for Division of Housing. The team I worked with was Deb, who was my main mentor, Molly, who's the Director of Housing and Community Investment, Katie, our project manager, Kayleen, who's in charge of Inclusionary Housing, Adam, who's in charge of rehab and the CBG, CDBG program, Brenda, who provides support, and Tim, our attorney, because a lot of housing is a lot of legal paperwork. So for the goal of HCI is to provide safe and affordable housing options to members of the community, is to connect residents with affordable housing options, support small businesses with opportunities for economic growth, and form partnerships to create and maintain vibrant neighborhoods within our community. Some projects I worked on was Village Place. This is the one I worked on most. It's a rehab of the senior living center, about 75 units. It's for the low-income seniors. Then I worked on the Ascent at Hoover Crossing, which is going to be multifamily housing with one, two, three, and four-bedroom apartments, and it may have an early childhood education center attached. Then I worked on Crispin 2, which is funded by Lytech, and it's going to be mainly for families. And then Zinnia is going to be permanent supportive housing, and it's typically for people right out of homelessness, and it's going to be mainly for singles adults, and it's going to be furnished and provide supportive services. Then lastly, Recovery Cafe, which is kind of its own project. It's going to provide a safe place where people can just rebuild their lives and connect with others in similar situations. Here's a picture of a sketch of Zinnia, a concept plan. And we did get to work on the color pickout. This is Village Place, and we had to go over a lot of stuff with this, such as like the solar, how are, where are the people going to move, like the seniors, where are they going to move when we do the renovation, everything from like curb to make it ADA-friendly. A big thing of housing is funding. I often thought that you just got the money from taxes, but it's a bit more complicated than that. Our first thing is the Affordable Housing Fund, which is the half of the marijuana sales tax, and then general fund from the city of Longmont, Fee and Lue from Boulder, the CDBG Home Fund Program, which is like special projects for like COVID money, and then ARPA, which is a one-time payment and not continuously, and then other partnerships are Lytech, DOH, HUD, and Sectioning. I also got to look at our roots assessment and the survey that was conducted citywide, and it had everything from people's income levels to jobs to population. So right now the city has about 2,657 units, and we're expected to grow. And then obviously, we can see the population's going to grow, so we need more affordable housing in Boulder County. This is AMI, which has to do with how you qualify for affordable housing. I also worked on Prop 123, which is a new bill that passed this year. It was to create affordable housing statewide, and it's just a small percent of our state income taxes goes to create this program. Longmont had to make a commitment, so we had to like make some, do some math and figure it out that we can build 100 units per year, which equals 304 units by 2026. I also worked on MHA, which is the Middle Income Housing Authority. It's just basically like low income, but to solve the middle income issue. And the Consortium, which is a rotational program with Boulder, Boulder County, and Brimfield, and it's just more money, and we have to provide money, but you got to figure out like what percent, which person gets which money. And things I learned about myself is that time management is key. Oftentimes, you got to meet project deadlines, and you got to have everything written on a calendar. Also learned that flexibility is key if meeting times change or budget changes. I also learned that organization is key. I was kind of messy with my notes, which kind of made things hard, but, and then I also learned that you want to keep learning. Housing is a very complicated topic, and it's just not one size fits all, so you got to keep learning and learning new bills. And thank you for everyone who gave me the opportunity of this internship. Thank you to all. Thank you to all council members and everyone in housing, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I am Allegra Grindel, and I'm currently a student at Colorado State University pursuing supply chain management and international business. So I would like to share my internship with the city of Longmont. Because my interest in supply chain management, I want to explore dive deep in what it is and what they do. So I was assigned in purchasing contract, purchasing and contract department. At first, I didn't know what it was. I was like, I didn't even know there's a department to it. I thought finance do everything, but they're different. And so basically, they all the city projects, constructions, city vehicles, and anything that had to do with contracts, it goes through them. And they're very important, like without them, yeah, it'll be bad. And then, and I was assigned under the mentorship of Valerie Scott, who is the Purchasing and Contract Department Manager. And she, right off the bat, she told me, I know what project I'm going to give you. And I was told to create an economic forecast for five topics. The first topic was UPC, UPS, battery backup. The second topic was general construction, PVC, microchips, and vehicles. And these are all the main city concern about like current now. So at first, I didn't know what PVC, PPS, UPC, oh my God, UPS. UPS was, I thought it was the delivery truck like that, but then I was wrong. It's actually in uninterruptible power supply. So at first, I never did economic forecasts before, so I started doing research. So I collected data from like different websites. And then I looked at the battery backup, how like lithium is very like is getting very expensive and throughout the year, and it will continue growing up, like continue go up. It won't stop because it's so hard to extract them. And everything nowadays, all the technology needs battery. So I learned how like people, some company are looking alternative, like people are starting to looking into sodium ion battery. And in fact, China already started look like planning using sodium ion battery for cars instead of lithium, because lithium and plus like cheaper with sodium ion battery. And I learned, I take a look at microchip and vehicles. Microchip, we, because of COVID and Ukraine, Ukraine situation and the unstable situation in China, microchip have been having some real really hard time. So I was like looking at data of how like forecasting like what will happen like for the next like year. And I, I learned that in March of 2023, the US started distributing the CA CHIP Act funding while the European, the Europe base began to take a look into the chip simulation game. So they basically help the microchip study into like research and and they donate the US semiconductor firms invested 58.8 bailing in research and experimental to keep out department, to keep out with the microchip department. And then the first nine months of 2021, at the peak of chips journey, the global auto production declined dramatically by 26%, which is why we've been facing a lot of, I heard from Valerie that vehicles are taking a longer time to being distributed, and we're having a lot of problem like getting our vehicle over. And then I look at the general construction, I took a look at the Colorado Construction Cost Index. So far from what I found is that it had, right now, the Colorado Construction Cost Index has a about 6.54% increase in the line. And I learned how like all the like places internationally are very important, like for example, Ukraine, because Ukraine got attacked by Russia, the producer of electrical switchgear reported that delivery time doubled from 20 weeks to 40 weeks. So I learned how small places, like small country impact here, like even though it's so far away and so like out of the blue, but every place is better. And then I get the chance to shadow Nikki Davidson and Valerie, who is my mentor. Nikki Davidson is a buyer too in the purchasing contract department. She showed me how people file RFP, and then she showed me how like she filed, she processed RFP and approved them or declined them. And then I get to see like the day work life that she had, like she had like all planned out, like this morning, I'm going to do the, I'm going to look over the RFP and afternoon I have meeting and all that. And then I get to shadow Valerie, and she had like, I realized that she very busy, like she had meeting on back-to-back, like an hour, every meeting she had like an hour, and after that meeting, she'll have another meeting. I was like, when do you eat? Like, I'm like, make sure that you're having a break and taking care of yourself. And then aside from Valerie, she like great, aside from like the city project and meeting and contract, she also part of the National Institute of Government and Purchasing, which is NIGP. And then she basically do her out her will. She helped out like small businesses in like giving suggestion and mentoring them how like helping out the small community here. And then, where is the future? So this internship provided me hands-on experience, hands-on experience for chairman inside and confident and independent. Through the economic forecast, I get to have real life, real world experience in like how to make an economic forecast and how important it was to all businesses, all like government and anything that had to like that related to business. And then procurement inside, like supply chain, I would, at first I chose it because like I was interested, but now I get to see like how it actually is, like how everything goes through supply chain. And then like the daily challenges, the trends on the market. And then this internship gave me confidence and it, and I get the flexibility and independence to do my projects. And Valerie, she's like always there to like ask, like she always asked me like, are you okay, like do you need any help? Like she always made sure that I was like on the, on the path, on the right path. And I feel more confident in like creating in this business. And I'd like to say I would like to continue the path of supply chain management. And I would like to thank you, everyone here for giving the opportunity of the internship.
So I did have the opportunity to read Allegra's analysis, and it just was like, yes, the struggle is real, everything she said. Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Carmen to share just for a brief moment what it was like as a mentor of Kennedy, who is not able to be here today. But as I said, we'll find a suitable way for her to also present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carmen Ramirez, Community and Neighborhood Resources. So Kennedy Ferguson was my intern, and she was or is helping us with our community engagement, revamping our guide and also our training and also developing a little marketing spiel for our training that we're going to be doing within the city. So I really want to say thank you to all of you for supporting this. It brought in fresh eyes. It brought in energy. It brought in like new connections. So Kennedy is co-owner of BRICS Retail, right down here, right down the street. So that was kind of nice where you find connections. The other piece that it really helped was to kind of see folks that say, well, I had no idea the city did that. I had no idea it was that complex. How do they get to the decision-making? And really kind of open that curiosity, as you heard from others, so that it says the next step is I want to come work for a municipal government, right? And I think that's really important. So I want to thank you for that and just end on that note. Thank you.
Okay, if we could get a picture with the council, the interns, Carmen, Chris, who is one of our steering team members, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great. And in the meantime, I'd like to bring down Caleb and Joanne. Caleb has been our absolute support through this whole program. Thank you, Caleb, for all of your work. Why don't you come down and snap a quick picture? Thank you, Mayor.
I also want to thank the mentors and the departments that helped these interns. And it sounded like they all had a great experience, and I think the city got a lot out of it as well. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peck. I'll go ahead and mention some of those folks. So that was, yeah, go ahead and go right around the center there. There you go. Phil Greenwald and Ben Ortiz for Transportation, Cash Johns and his staff for Fleet. Allegra already talked about Valerie Scott. Who am I missing? And Kennedy mentioned all the folks for housing. Wonderful. Yeah, there we go, squished together. You might need to squish a little more together. Don't make her hang out there on her own. Thank you, everyone. Oh, one more. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and to our interns.
Now, we're here at the point of our joint meeting of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority and the Longmont City Council. I move that we recess as the Longmont City Council and convene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority. So all those in favor of convening?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously. So we're going to bring up the LURA staff group. Mayor, we do need to do a roll call first of the LURA? Yes. I was waiting to see if the other members were going or coming down. Okay. Eugene, you're hired. That's it. Okay, so can we do a roll call? Let's start with Chris McGilvery. Turn on the microphone.
Here.
Thank you. Wes Parker.
Here.
Harold Dominguez, are you on the, are you on the board?
Then just the council member.
Jim Berthold is not here either. Okay. So all of council. So go, can you?
Absolutely. Shakita Yarborough.
Here.
Sean McCoy.
Present.
Susie Hidalgo-Ferring.
Here.
Joan Peck.
Here.
Erin Rodriguez.
Here.
Marshall Martin.
Here.
Tim Waters. And then missing or absent are Jim Berthold and Emily Beam.
So I'll turn this over to Joni Marsh.
Sure. Chairman Peck, members of the Urban Renewal Authority. So I'm Joni Marsh, Assistant City Manager. Typically, Tony would be here as the Urban Renewal Executive Director, but he's on vacation this week. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Charles Woolley. And Charles is here this evening to, or Charlie, saying Charlie, Charles sounds a little formal. But Charlie's going to go through a presentation about the sugar mill, and we thought it would be a great opportunity for the entire board to see the same presentation and have the opportunity to ask questions. So with that, I'll introduce Charlie, and he'll get started.
I just have all these notes that I want to, so. Thank you, Mayor and City Council and LURA Board. Where's our intern? I want to use lots of acronyms tonight. Thank you for inviting us to share our work on Longmont Sugar Factory. I'm Charlie Woolley, co-founder of St. Charles Town Company, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of a development team of four private companies with deep experience in historic rehabilitation, master plan communities, environmental remediation and enhancement. We have all arrived at the development of the Sugar Mill Quarter, as we call it, from different places. For my part, I've been a frequent Longmont visitor for the past 40 years to celebrate birthdays and holidays with my in-laws, who came to Longmont in the 1930s to farm sugar beets. Arriving in Longmont, you can't miss the 275-foot smokestack, the silos, and the impressive six-story factory. These buildings are a true wonder to behold coming into Longmont, and I've wondered what could happen to them as we arrived on our various journeys here. In 2014, our Affordable Housing Development Team at St. Charles determined that CHAFA, Colorado Housing Finance Authority, had a QAP that favored Lytec, historic rehab, and also coupled with disaster relief funding would be a great project. And so we contacted the owners to get permission to make an application for the tax credits and bonds for this project, and it didn't work. We did not get an award of tax credits because it was too expensive at the time. But this began a 10-year relationship with Clean Energy LLC, the owners of the sugar And they have been cooperative and working with us to save the buildings and create a unique real estate project. The Golden Group, one of our four developer factories, you know, have five generations in Longmont and have been owners and developers for nearly as long Mont has been in existence. Remington Homes is a home builder, developer that arrived looking for land to build residential on. And my partners, Generator Development and Starboard Realty, got roped into it by me looking for in part a distillery location and a job. We're here to ask you to engage with us in a public-private partnership to save the sugar mill and make a unique Longmont-centric place. We're making a bold declaration that we're all engaged in being visionaries. Let's see if I can advance the slide here. So that's our development team. Our company is a 30-year-old real estate development company with nearly $1 billion in development projects since 1993. We've done historic rehab projects from toxic paint factories converted to mixed use to stewarding spectacular historic buildings, commercial buildings. In the last decade, St. Charles Town Company has concentrated on affordable housing, having built about 1,000 units in the metro area. Generator Development is a 24-year- Generator Development is a 24-year-old real estate and community development company whose name has become synonymous with creative design and transformative value-driven development throughout Denver's unique neighborhoods. A project with Generator stamp on it is sure to be thoughtfully integrated and pedestrian-friendly that enhances the community by catering to the needs of those living and working in the area. The team at Generator has worked on both ground-up projects and adaptive reuse projects, like the one on the screen, and with a focus on historic preservation. Generator's creativity extends to many worlds, including ice cream. The Little Man Ice Cream Group, which you can see the big can is, is not so little anymore, and we'd be lucky to get a giant milk can at the Sugar Mill. So, Remington Homes is a family-owned home building and development company that is celebrating 50 years in Colorado. They're headquartered in Narvada. Remington has been active in the west and northmester areas. Remington's foray into new urban development is with Downtown Superior, and it's been an award-winning project. The variety of homes varies from attainable to luxury in that project. Our partner, Starboard Realty, is a land use and public finance consulting company. Starboard clients range from developers to cities to urban renewal authorities and nonprofits. Starboard's principal, Bruce O'Donnell, is noted for his creative solutions and persistence in managing challenging public-private partnerships. I want to just chat briefly. I've made this presentation to some of you before. I'm a history buff. I was a museum curator before I was a real estate developer, so I'm not as evil as I may look. But anybody who makes their career in historic preservation work is a history buff. And reading about the Sugar Factory history, I was struck by how its construction was citizen-led in 1902 by 40 individuals who put a little bit of money up, that totaled $70,000 that was leveraged into $1,000,002 construction financing for the original Sugar Factory. It was not owned by a company, it was going to be built by the community. And here we are, 123 years later, looking at another citizen-led project. The building itself is an incredibly complex factory that was built in a little more than a year's time, and we're talking about earlier two years to get variants of 150 feet. This thing was built in less than a year and a half. It has an incredible amount of steel and cast iron columns that today can support incredible floor loads for very heavy equipment and beet processing. The exterior brick walls, surprisingly, are not load-bearing. They're as much curtain walls enclosing the factory as anything. The corbeling and the detailing of the brickwork is a source of pride for the workers who built it and for the owners of the factory who built it. It was built, as my partner Paul calls it, as a cathedral of industry. The factory evolved with technology and equipment, was exchanged for new technologies, and things were added on. In 1959, the last big change came to the addition of the factory, which was the Great Pulp Shed, a building whose floor area is larger than a football field and was built as a free-span space with 75-foot-tall ceilings and a roofline that follows the angle of repose so that when they stacked huge piles of sugar beet pellets, they would fall to the floor. This is a shot of the current exterior of one of the elevations, and it's hard to envision a new destination when we looked at this worst elevation, which has been subject to arson and extreme vandalism. From the air, the site is messy, but most of the buildings are salvageable. The development site that we're proposing is bounded by the Burlington Northern Tracks on the south and open space on the south, and on the north by Sugar Mill Road and the Great Western Railroad. The city recycling center, once part of the property, will provide an important through-connection to the downtown grid at the west end. What the Sugar Mill Quarter looked like, we think, could be spectacular, and this is a rendering that our international architects provided us as part of our planning process. Along the southern border is a buffer to the railroad, which will be created with a crescent-shaped roadway called the Corniche, a roadway that connects the edge of the development but a transition to the open space to the south. The historic core is repurposed for commercial use, retail, boutique hotel, farmer-table restaurants, brewery, distillery, maker spaces, and agribusinesses that find an authentic home in an agricultural manufacturing plant. The newly-built housing is built in polygon-shaped blocks with a distinctly Longmont architecture. The residential will offer homes for sale at a variety of Longmont price points, including attainable-for-sale homes. The smaller multifamily buildings are intentionally small to open the possibility of condominium for sale for entry-level buyers. Landscaping and streets are pedestrian-oriented and are intended to slow traffic and promote interesting street strolling. St. Charles signed a contract with Clean Energy at about the same time Remington Homes signed a contract with South Mill, at about the same time the city signed a contract to undertake the Sugar Factory and Steam Subarea Plan. Our simultaneous planning processes were synced and aligned. Our international land planners, including Leon Creher and Associates, who is a world-renowned architect, has master-planned new urbanist and traditional architecture communities that are economically successful, as well as destinations for tourists and residents of that region. Historic preservation of the factory was cited as a nearly universal goal of participants in the community outreach for both the subarea plan and for our work. The research and findings support a mixed-use community with a demonstrable demand for additional for-sale and rental residential, as well as commercial uses. A factory plan with outside storage can be re-envisioned, and in fact, market momentum has already reached the Sugar Mill site with three multifamily projects comprising nearly 900 units ahead of the planning schedule for our Sugar Mill Quarter. 180 units are planned, or actually under construction now, in parcel seven of this map. 365 units are in parcel five, are scheduled for groundbreaking next March, and 335 units in parcel six are ahead in the annexation queue ahead of our Sugar Mill Quarter plan. This is our master plan in a plan form. It's a plan that maximizes connection to open spaces, both existing and newly-created plazas and a nearly 10-acre park south of the shed. In the plazas are civic buildings with potential commercial spaces that act as terminated vistas for secondary and primary streets, which draw pedestrians to activity zones that are sized for the immediate neighborhood projects. These zones create a walkable, livable environment. Blowing up the plan, you can see the historic factory core is the centerpiece of the whole project and remains the tallest and, of course, densest part of the plan. There are courtyards within the historic core and pedestrian, interior pedestrian sheets and plazas for gathering and events. The shed is an extraordinary opportunity to create a one-of-a-kind performing arts center, an event center. It's large enough to accommodate the long-form program of Longmont performing arts community, as well as potential commercial concerts and events that are attractive to a unique venue. A parking garage wrapped with housing will be required to support the historic core commercial and performing arts at the shed. Townhomes nestled into the westernmost parcels can be built to jump-start the project due to the proximity of infrastructure at South Martin Street, and will enable the project to fund public financing to help fund environmental cleanup and structural stabilization. Townhomes are concentrated on the western end of the project, while residential and commercial density is concentrated near the existing dense historic area. Connections to and from our site were seen as one of the great challenges of the subarea plan. The Sugar Mill Quarter Plan provides a High Street, shown in yellow here, that connects the Fairfield Residential to the east, all the way through our site to South Martin Street, and ultimately beyond to the Longmont Civic Center where we are now. Here is a rendering of one of the walkable secondary streets. This one is just north of High Street, the High Street, the yellow street that I just showed, looking east to the factory and the historic core. The High Street featuring a rocky mountain-high view of Long's Peak among the multiple views on the Long Street through the project. These are, you know, very much pedestrian-oriented streets that are walkable and drivable. The Corniche establishes the edge connection to Longmont open space, as well as buffering the railroad tracks, which in the future should be removed from the center of Longmont. The road has a separation of a promenade, on-street parking, and traffic. The historic core featured in this rendering is where the factory is now, but it's expanded to the north of Sugar Mill, where a future transit center featuring rail service has been featured in Longmont's past planning efforts. That would be something to see. To see that, we have key principles to the development, and they're fairly obvious ones: cleanup of the buildings, repurposing the buildings, developing the surrounding land in a placemaking format that supports the historic buildings, and the residential development range of housing options for Longmont residents, from affordable homeownership to affordable housing. We want to promote a walkable and sustainable site, and we want to create a public-private partnership to leverage public financing to build a community of up to 2,200 residents and 250,000 square feet of commercial use. This is an interior photo that looks pretty good inside the factory. It's got pretty paint on it, graffiti, and it gets you imagining what things could be. There have been graffiti artists and urban explorers galore breaking into the buildings to witness firsthand the potential of the buildings. It's equally daunting to see the savaging of steel and iron and effects of broken windows and a collapsing roof. Through all the debris, there's a six-story atrium in this building that's awe-inspiring. It is a mess, though. This is an industrial building with a co-working space in Los Angeles, California, and this is the sort of vision that we hope we can bring to the Sugar Mill Factory. Here's another factory, celebrated and restored to be a corporate headquarters in San Francisco. Again, you know, steel and a wonderful atrium roof. This is a marketplace in a former cotton factory in Atlanta, and these are the kinds of things that I think we can bring to the Sugar Mill. It's got a mass and scale that's unlike anything else in Longmont, and I think it's impressive, and as such, it can become an entertainment district like this former power plant in Kansas City. Interior rail lines within the two factory buildings, showing the owner and me in the distance, can become interior streets and alleys that are, you know, really beautiful and walkable. As I mentioned earlier, our program is for 2,200 units, 250,000 square feet of historic rehab, and a 64,000-square-foot performing arts center. This is a rendering of one of the polygon blocks, which I just thought I'd show, has a density of 161 units, all three-story buildings, small, that could be condominiums or apartments. This is an example of a block in a project with some of Leon Creher's collaborators in Florida. Again, three- and four-story buildings housed. This is a building that is proposed for our site as part of the Leon Creher Plan. This is an example of the same sort of project built in Texas, actually designed by one of the groups that has one of the perimeter sites at the Sugar Mill. Townhouse is conceptually designed from our project. Townhouse is actually built in Colorado in Buena Vista. It can be done, and it's really wonderful. I mean, it looks authentic and has the kind of character. Again, another corner-type building that, you know, would seize a corner. Here it is, built again in Buena Vista, Colorado, two- and three-story buildings that fit into the character of everything. The challenges: we know there's environmental contamination. We have been studying it for almost two years. We think that we have our arms around it, and, you know, we're ready to basically work our way into a contract to do the abatement and soils cleanup. We have site and storm drainage issues. We have a lack of infrastructure. We have a lack of water service. We have annexation and zoning issues and timing for that. We have a wastewater treatment and railroad tracks on one edge of our site that's not as attractive as it could be, which we need to deal with, and we have wetland conditions on our site. Our solutions are grants, TIF, special districts, drainage reclamation, possibly with mining with our partners, the Goldens. We are all experienced developers. We have the access to significant private investment. And finally, at the end of the day, we will do a historic district so we can access the historic preservation investment tax credits. So that's everything. So community investment, 120 years ago, brought you the Sugar Factory that operated for 73 years by Great Western, provided jobs, and frankly, you know, people like my in-laws were able to successfully farm sugar beets here, our number-one crop in Colorado during the 1920s. And I think, you know, we're looking at doing something, again, that would last hundreds of years, I think, which I think would be a great investment for the community that will, you know, pay dividends very, very long into the future. This is a quote our analyst found: "We shape our buildings thereafter they shape us." This is an inspiring rendering of a potential conversion of the Tin Shed, as we call it, to the Performing Arts Center for Longmont. And it could, something like this could shape generations of Longmonters to come to celebrate art, music, and theater in a spectacular building that was rehabbed from something that was saved. "Our planner's wisdom is both a declaration and philosophy," this is Leon Creher's quote. "This project is about more than just a project. It's about a collective values and preservation, which is inherently the most sustainable building practice." We are ready to move our project forward, and this is our really first public foray here in Longmont, and we're excited to gather your support and the community's support to make something really exciting happening. And we thank you for letting us introduce ourselves and our project tonight.
Thank you, Charlie. Very nice.
Want me to sit on the hot seat?
This is an exciting development in concept, and all of council, I think most of council got to tour out there, and he's right, it is a mess. But it's very exciting as to what can be done with it. Are there any questions or comments from the other?
Is there a time that you think this could start?
We're not taking. Not audience participation? This is just a presentation. Okay, Counselor, Edogofaring.
Do you have a timeframe?
You know, I had, I added a slide later on, which has a timeline in it, and it starts in 2014 and it ends in 2030. So this is not, you know, this is not a short-term deal, and we've been looking at it for a long time. But we have a lot of work to do to put in place the public financing, the zoning, you know, and be able to actually implement the plan that we've designed with the city. And I think that process really starts, you know, sort of tonight, and started with an annexation referral that we did last week. Want a mic? Okay. Step up to the microphone. And so that work is beginning right now, August of 2023, and we're hoping that by the fall of '24, we will be able to have all of that put in place so that we can begin the abatement of the buildings and the cleanup of the ground. You know, this environmental, I was talking to the EPA today. This is not a superfund site, which is a good thing. It's just a big mess, and there's a lot of asbestos there, and it just is going to take time, and unfortunately, asbestos contractors don't come cheaply. And so that asbestos abatement program that we have from our existing contractor would go from October of '24 to October of '25, and then it takes a couple of months for us to get what they call a no-action determination, which means we don't have to do anything more cleanup on the site. And at that point, we propose to close on the land, financing, and everything else, and we hope that we could begin construction and renovations right after that. So, and then, you know, our phases, in order to get everything in place, you know, they begin in April of '26, and our vertical construction starts then, so we hope to have
hope to have buildings coming out of the ground in '26, and as I said earlier, if we hit a good market, maybe in four to five years after that, by 2030, 2031, you know, we've got something that looks like a big addition to the Village of Longmont.
Okay. Chris?
All right. This is exciting. Thank you for the presentation, Charlie. I think one of the biggest challenges we have as we move forward is workforce development. There's more and more of our citizens that, if they're working, if they're living in Longmont, they're not working in Longmont. That percentage is going down, so what's really exciting about this project is the 250,000 square foot of commercial. And so can you highlight what your vision is, and we could open it up for the others, of what you envision that 250,000 square feet looking like?
I'll start with the factory, which, you know, we have done three or four tours now with hotel developers who salivate over the opportunity to kind of make this into something really spectacular as a destination hotel site, and that would all, you know, I can't remember how many hotel employees that we would create, but it's in the hundreds. So we're, you know, a couple hundred employees if we were able to land a boutique hotel. You know, they're going to look at the marketplace, and I know you're considering doing another one downtown, but our proximity to the hotel, our proximity to that side of town, I think are all great advantages to it. If there's a performing arts center and a 500 units we're planning in our first phase that we think we can get done, all of a sudden, there's the mass of population to support something like that. There's, we've done an economic model for an additional 60,000 square feet of retail, and as I mentioned earlier, you know, Paul owns this facility, and he's got an ice cream shop, and I think we've got the feasibility to do that, and my gosh, I think there's more Longmont breweries than there are per capita, almost, than any other city. So I know that there's a lot of beer drinkers, so I do think, I do think we can do those kinds of deals. In addition to, you know, our company and Paul, we do these neighborhood developments in small neighborhoods in Denver where we attract mom and pops, and we know how to lease to small businesses. We know how to set them up for success. We know what they can pay for rent. We know how to make it simple so that, so that we can do even startups, and I think that we have, you know, within that complex, if you remember walking through, that interior street is fabulous, and I think we can stack small shop spaces on either side of that to make that, to make that work. In what we call the ruins, which are on the south side of the property, I mean, we've seen a wonderful wedding venue in Minneapolis. It's a summer venue. It's called the Minneapolis Mills Project, which you get on your website, check it out. They saved the walls of the building that had blown up, and we have a blown-up building at the Sugar Mill, and I think, you know, the weddings happen in these ruins. It's almost like a medieval situation, so I think, you know, there's event businesses and entertainment opportunities within the, within the complex as well. The one-story buildings, of which we have three really good warehouses right now that leak, and there's bricks falling out and stuff like that, but they're in good shape, and those are going to be fairly easy to, I think, renovate and lease, so.
Any other discussion? Counselor Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Peck, and Charlie, thanks for your presentation and to the team that's here. You finished your presentation with a list of challenges and solutions. Maybe the question I would have less for you at this point than for Harold, take Charlie out of the picture, put any developer in that seat, anybody who's come to the city to say, "We've got an idea. We've got a vision to transform a blighted area into an asset." Would there any be, would be it a different list of challenges for any developer?
No, and I think actually, when you look at some of the projects we've engaged in that we've seen to fruition, I mean, think of the Butterball Factory and South Main Station and some of the work we've done. No, and this is probably the most significant, complex project that I think any community can imagine. I think also, when you look at what the community said about the Sugar Mill, when you see the condition and you see the challenges, we know there are environmental issues, and, you know, time's not our friend, and it hasn't been our friend. If you look at just what this looked like 20 years ago versus what it looks like today, we're going to run out of time at some point.
So the reason for the question is, there will, well, no doubt, as this goes forward, be narratives that develop, right, in the community about this project, and unless we want to just see an area that's already blighted as time's running out, because I'm going to ask you, and the next question is going to be, what are the implications for the city if we don't do something here, right? If we choose not to do this? I don't know when the next team would come along, because I don't know when the last team came along, certainly not in my tenure on city council. So what are the, what are the consequences? What would you project the consequences for the city to be if we do nothing?
Well, I'll just kind of talk about what are we dealing with today, and so one of the things I've looked at, and I asked James Brown to pull some data, so since 2019, from 2019 to 2023, between Boulder County Sheriff's Office, Boulder County Fire Department, Longmont Police, and Longmont Fire Department, we've had about 389 calls. Now, those vary. You know, a couple of years ago, we actually had a fire out there, and basically, you take a defensive position because if you've been through the facility, we don't necessarily want our staff moving through those facilities based on the holes that are in the floor and everything that's going on, so I think we have an issue, not I think, we have an issue today, and so, you know, what does that look like to the future?
It just worsens.
It just progresses, you know, I can look and see, it's progressively gotten worse over time.
And my point is, there's, there are all kinds of risks that go along with this for the developers, for the city. The greatest risk would be, it sounds to me, would be to do nothing and let a blighted area just get, become more toxic or more dangerous for our public safety folks and members of the community. So I, it has to be taken seriously, in my mind. The total investment, Charlie, to bring this to life, what would you anticipate?
We are, we're running not a vertical, we're not, we're not running vertical costs, but we think total with vertical, we don't, we're not building all the vertical, it's about $2 billion of development that will happen.
So that's a, you're talking about $2 billion of investment in Longmont, both public and private dollars?
Yes.
To take a blighted area and turning it into the kind of asset that this has the potential to be. What are the risks for you?
Well, I mean, you know, we have market risks. I think that's one of our biggest ones. You know, we, and I, Paul would probably say the same thing, never bought a historic building that didn't have environmental issues. You just, you don't get them. This is extraordinary, but I do think we have our handle on the environmental, and, you know, and as I was saying to somebody earlier today, it's not a superfund site. The soil situation is manageable. We don't have groundwater contamination. We have a ton of asbestos, and it's all over the place, and we got to get that stuff out of there, and the asbestos contractors aren't cheap, and so I think that's really, I don't think we have this, like, runaway risk of environmental cleanup costs. So that's my judgment. I've done this for 30 years, and that's my judgment, so I think that's, that's one. I think, you know, there is risk of the public safety stuff. We've got, we've got probably a year, we have 14 months before we think we can start the environmental cleanup, and during that time, I think there are things we can do safety-wise, which we've talked with Harold about. We have a giant budget for security when we start cleanup. Well, maybe we get that going, you know, the security stuff going first, and we have to spend a little bit more money to do that, but I think that is an issue for us. You know, I'm a little concerned that our sellers might die. The son at 52 had a heart attack four times, and Dick is 82 years old, you know? I mean, I do get worried that that could be a challenge for us, but, and I think really, you know, the last one, what I'd just say is that, you know, the, you know, the partnership with you guys to get public financing doesn't come together, and there is no project without that, frankly, so.
And my last comment being, and I'll yield, that part of the narrative that may develop around this project is that we've got a group of out-of-town developers who want to come in and exploit the community, right? I mean, that's, that's, I'm not, I'm suggesting that's what emerges at times, and what the public ought to know, that there haven't been any other developers come along willing to accept the risks that you just identified with a plan to develop the kind of financing to bring this, to do the cleanup and bring something out of the ground, and it may be a lifetime or generations before we have other developers willing to take the risk to turn that area into an asset, and I just think we need to start building a message here of what this means potentially for the community, what it takes on the private side is what it's going to take, as well as what it's going to take on the, on the public side, and what it means, not just short-term, but for the next 100 years in Longmont, so.
I really, I appreciate your saying that. I mean, I will tell you, I love this work. Paul does, too. We're passionate about it. It is hard work. There is no, there's no amount of profit that you don't deserve to get from doing this. It's just really hard work, and there aren't a lot of people that do it, you know, and to do something at this scale, you know, I'm, you know, I'm, we're both fortunate. We've been doing it between us 54 years. We can make it happen, but it's not, there aren't, the developers who are building multifamily housing around this city don't touch stuff like this. They don't want to get their fingers dirty or tangled up in a mess like this. So I think it does take special, it's special people, and, you know, all of our peers, I mean, our, you know, the Dana Crawfords of the world are cheering us on. They know about what we're trying to get done, and they think we're crazy. No, but, you know, they're, you know, the people that do this, you know, they, you know, they're aware that we're trying to get this done, so.
Well, good. I would say good luck, but good luck is the product of planning an opportunity, right? And so you're going to have a lot of good luck.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Charlie, I think my colleague to the left has done a really great job of pulling out some of the risks and giving you an opportunity to talk about that. There are many of us in Longmont's arts community, visionary people, large and small, who have pinned a lot of hopes on that beautiful cathedral-like building that you showed us earlier in your presentation, and now you've given us, you know, a wonderful, almost fairy tale surroundings for that center. Can you talk about the potential benefits of an anchor like that and what it does for the community of Longmont and how it reaches into an existing commercial environment as well as the residential environment, and, you know, what's it going to eject into our community in terms of life, art, and money?
And I, I know there's a feasibility study that I read early on in the process that forecasted things, but I think, you know, I, I think in Denver, for example, they brag that the Denver Center for Performing Arts has more patrons than the sports teams, and that's probably because there's a longer season, there's more events going on, and I would like to think that, you know, you have a vibrant, supportive community. I think that you can program a lot of events. You cannot fill that thing every single day, and I think, you know, the plan that we've seen and, you know, sort of our vision is that it's more than just performing arts, that a portion of the building certainly is devoted to the performing arts vision, but that it's big enough to do all kinds of events, and, you know, I don't think Paul can race his motorcycle in there against other guys, but, I mean, it's big enough that you can do, I think, a variety of public markets, and you could put an ice rink in that smaller part of the building that has been programmed. There's just a ton of things that it can do, and I think that that's the, and it's such an interesting place. We've had two concert promoters, the biggest two in the country, come up and look at it and say, "Yeah, if you really put the money into it and you give us restrooms, we can book 20 concerts here a year, easy," and it's because it's an interesting venue. It's not like the Arvada Center or Pace in Parker. It's unique. It's really different, and it's a soft ticket that we can take a guy that doesn't necessarily produce the same number of ticket sales at one of those places, we can get him much, many more tickets sold in a soft venue that's interesting and just a cool place. So I think we can create a community around the activity that the Performing Arts Center says that will spin off businesses in the historic factory and, and I think, make it really a destination, not just for Longmont, but for the whole front range. I really believe that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, for me, the takeaway is, the bottom line is, something needs to be done with that property, and it does take a team. The city cannot, cannot do this alone. It takes a team, and I think, I think you're the right team, and I know that our staff has been working with you for over a year. This isn't something brand new that you just brought forward, so. So Wes, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that it's exciting because I, I was, I was telling Charlie before we started, that is how I come to work every day, and I drive by that every single day, and the amount of investment that it would take as a partnership from the city and developers like yourselves to make that the gateway of how you're coming in, and this is what's going to introduce people to Longmont, and so I think that, as you've said, Mayor Peck, that it is vital that we partner with it and do something with this property.
Correct. Counselor McCoy?
Thank you. Well, my classmate from class of 1984, Wes Parker, and I have probably here seen for the last 40 years a slow deterioration of this property, and I'd like to think, and I have never heard in all the time, that I served in different capacities on council or planning zoning or things like that, any sort of proposal for this, so I'd like to see, you know, at least an attempt to make something happen there before it really just falls apart.
Well, seeing no one else in the queue, thank you so much for this presentation, and your, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I'd like to just mention to Councilman Waters.
And can we have your name? I don't think you've got.
Paul Tambarello with Generator Development. Thank you. One comment to your point, Councilman Waters, is that even if the building, if we don't do the building, the buildings as it, when it gets demo, you know, demoed, there's still, all those asbestos costs remain. Somebody will have to pay those asbestos costs, and in other cities where that's happened, you know, at this point right now, if taxes, the liens, somebody takes them over or nobody takes them over, the county at this point would have that responsibility if they walked away from it, so the abatement costs still exist regardless of what happens. I think that's a really important point.
Good point. Good. Well, thank you.
I'll add one other thing.
Go ahead.
Just because everybody knows that this owner has had these buildings since 1979. The 10 years that I've spent building a relationship with the owner have really paid off. We've got him in a really good place. He is somewhat indigent, which I've told everybody, you know, we bailed him out on his taxes, otherwise it would have been potentially lost to taxes, and so we have created a relationship of trust, and I don't think he's trusted anyone to get as far as we have to get to a contract and then to work through all this environmental stuff and get there. So I would say that that is a, that's a turning point for this property, is that the ownership is with us and needs us to get it done, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. This was great. Yeah. Can I have a motion to adjourn as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor McCoy, to adjourn as the Longmont, as Lura, and reconvene as the Longmont City Council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Let's take a five-minute break. Let's take a five-minute break. So we are back, and we are going to do first call, public invited to be heard. Looks like a lot of our public disappeared. Sorry. The first one on the list is Dean Lehman.
Good afternoon, good evening rather, Mayor Peck and city council members. My name is Dean Lehman. My address is 2313 Lake Park Drive. I'm speaking in opposition to the ballot proposal that could lead to the demolition of the Longmont YMCA at 9th and Ashley Street. It seems to me that the, the voters should have the opportunity to deal with the Dry Creek Park proposal and the YMCA separately. It's my understanding that you have the authority to separate those. You could do that tonight. I think it would be more fair. As you probably know, there's a long history of the, the YMCA in Longmont. Goes back to at least 1961, when a group got together talking about the why. The years went on. It took a long time to build that facility. A lot of people worked on it. A lot of people supported it. And to turn it over to the bulldozers, I think would be a very sad day in Longmont. It has many, many things to do over there. Just this morning, there were people doing lap swimming. There was a exercise class. I won't go into all the things they have. It's a well-run facility. It is a friendly facility, and it's an asset to Longmont. I think it would be greatly missed. There are many questions about this proposal. There are very few answers. And so I think that any destruction of the YMCA that took decades to, to build should be rejected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Stanley Toll?
I think he left.
We'll go on to Lance Whitaker. I just saw Lance. He's out there. We'll go on then to Steve Altschuler.
Good evening. Steve Altschuler, 1555 Taylor Drive. Before I say what I'm, I was going to say, I just want you to think, that gentleman was talking about six years of construction for the sugar, for this sugar mill. That's going to be a lot of trucks going in and out of Ken Pratt for years. And once it's built, 2,200 homes, 25, 250,000 square feet of residential space, you're talking about probably 10,000 cars a day driving in and out of that area. That's going to make a mess out of Ken Pratt like obviously no one can imagine. All right. What I was going to say, we've all heard, give me your tired, your poor, and your hungry. Nowhere does it say that we will feed you, house you, and clothe you, clothe you for free for life. America is the land of opportunity. What you do with that opportunity is up to you. We are not supposed to be the land of entitlement. But from the folks in the White House to the person at the Colorado Capitol and the Longmont City Council, the mentality seems to be tax those that work and give to those that don't want to work. I have here a paper, a Longmont paper. It has 25 different places in Boulder County where you can get help from the hour center and everything else, clothes, food, tents, probably drugs, needles, whatever you need. I think we're doing a lot to help people in need, and it's not getting any better, but I'll, I'll get to that. There's free drugs and needles in North Longmont. That to me is as stupid as all get out. If people are drug addicts, get them help. Why are you enabling them? Why is the city of Longmont enabling them? Boulder County has spent millions and millions on homeless, and we have more homeless than ever. We need to stop enabling the needy and start providing education or mental services, not freebies. Also, criminals, car thieves, shoplifters, home invaders need to be in jail, not released and coddled. Land gifted to the city for open space should not be usurped for the low income, for low-income housing, ruining existing homeowners' values in the process. City Council should help businesses succeed, not tax them into failure, and not force them to close with the next upcoming plandemic that we've already heard about. For these and many other reasons, I, Stephen Altschuler, do hereby declare that I am running for City Council for the at-large position. City Council needs to protect our Constitution and Bill of Rights, not find sneaky ways to subvert them. City Council needs to explain how Proposition HH will steal away our table rights forever. And City Council needs to help lower property taxes and help residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Gary Hodges.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Gary Hodges. I live at 2148 Stewart Street. It's kind of coincidental. I came down here tonight. Today I had a neat opportunity. I was a guest of the Mountain, Mountain View Fire Rescue. I was showing around and taking around. And one point, during the day, I was, I asked if you could, if my person showing me around, if they could take me around and show me places that keep them up at night. And it was interesting. So can you guess in one chance, the first place we went? The sugar mill. How about that? So it turns out Mountain View and Longmont just have dual, dual jurisdiction over that area. I guess there might be a few areas around Longmont where that's the case. And the gentleman told me a lot of stories about it. And it was actually the first time I'd driven right up next to it. And man, that place is, it's a mess. So really, something needs to be done. It was also earlier in this week, I was talking to a friend of mine who grew up here, and she was telling me about how when they were in high school, that people would go sneak in there, and she says it's really scary. And, and the fire chief that was driving me around today was telling me that they won't even go in there. They fly drones into it if they have a call. Police won't go in there. And, you know, it, it's probably a miracle that one of our Longmont youth haven't been killed in there through an accident or something. So I was going to come down here tonight and just talk about that. It's kind of interesting then that I looked on the agenda right before I came down. I thought, oh, wow, that's, that's interesting. But I was just going to say, you know, something needs to be done there for sure. Maybe this is it, and maybe it's not, you know, maybe raising it and starting fresh or something. But it's just, it's a, it's a place in desperate need of being addressed and somehow. And so, yeah, I, it was fascinating watching this tonight, and I, I hope we can do something. I hope something works out, so that's what I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Kim Konecki? Konecki?
Kim Konecki, 136 South Main Street, the Dickens Homestead historical property, the barn reception hall. Great sugar mill presentation. I think it ought to be well thought of, well done. I think it's the perfect people to take care of it from what the presentation was, since nobody else has stepped up to do it. I think it's great that they're thinking about doing the Performing Arts Center there. It's, I think, a bunch, a lot better location for the traffic flow that's going to be necessary for it, rather than some of the other thoughts and places they thought about putting it. Other than that, thank you very much for everything you do, and be safe.
Thank you. You too, Kim. Strider, Strider Binstone.
Strider Binstone, 951 West 17th. I, what they, the student interns, it's like when I was in high school, I didn't know there was city council meetings. We didn't learn anything. I didn't even know what history was until I met Fanny Lou Hammer on the boardwalk in, in Atlantic City in 1964. I've been studying it ever since then. And I agree with Dean Lehman on, don't, don't throw away the YMCA and the swimming pool. I mean, we had many years, the church city was going to take over the lake, and we blocked that one, and then we were going to have a mixed use with civic auditorium and stuff down where they put in that monstrous shopping center that's 100% commercial. We lost that. And, but a democratic city structure, maybe nationally we can have one again. And that, that, I mean, you've got good possibilities to really look into. I appreciate that. Judge Luttig today on Nicole Wallace's show. Wallace's show, she was, he was appointed by Herbert Walker Bush and was recommended for Supreme Court by W. Bush, and very, very conservative. And she asked him, is the Republican Party, he says, there is no such thing anymore. It's a cult, a Trump cult. And we're facing the consequences of that. The Florida, Tennessee, and now Arkansas. Sarah Huckabee Sanders, her father was the governor. His mother, her grandmother, was one of only three or four teachers in Little Rock Central High School, who was humane and decent to the black students who came in 1957. I know that story deeply. I know some of the kids. I was only two years younger, 40 miles south of there in Malvern, Arkansas. And she, at this point, she said, well, we'll abolish the child labor laws. We'll abolish history. We'll abolish education. And that is what our country is facing right now, and it's coming from many different directions. Martin Luther King wrote "A Letter from Birmingham Jail." I gave some copies here of part of this. Yeah.
Oh, great. Thank you.
I gave away too many this morning. I don't have one for everybody.
So now we're seeing no one else on the list?
Lance.
Oh, I did. Oh, Lance, you're back. Sorry. I did call you, but you're in the end at the moment.
Sorry, Mayor and Council. My name is Lance Whitaker. I live at 1750 Collier Street, Longmont, Colorado. I've been a resident for over 40 years now, and finally, sort of suffering from VDS, vacation, decompression syndrome. Went to Montana for three weeks. And glad to hear that we are doing something about the Sugar Mill finally. Any kind of asbestos removal from that area is greatly appreciated. I just worry more about the water, and it's being the neighbor of that area. On, similar, today is National Tooth Fairy Day. Almost lost one, taking a bit against sidewalk. Today is also National, I forget. But everybody have a good day. You've all been great in providing good counsel for this Sugar Mill, and I hope it really does go through. Have a good day.
Thank you, Lance. So now, seeing no one else on the list, I am going to close final call, first call, public invited to be heard. We are now at the consent agenda. Don, would you mind reading the ordinances on the consent agenda?
Sure, Mayor. The ordinances on second, on this agenda will be on second reading and public hearing on September 12, 2023. Item 9A is ordinance 2023-40, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H52 to Tallulah Aviation LLC. 9B is ordinance 2023-41, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H33A to J&amp;J Hangar LLC. Item 9C is Resolution 2023-67, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado, Department of Local Affairs, for grant funding for an affordable and attainable neighborhood project under the Innovative Housing Incentive Grant Program. 9D is Resolution 2023-68, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing an agreement between the city of Longmont and WWW Properties LLC for the purchase of real property at 740 Boston Avenue for the first and main transit station facilities project. And 9E is approved three capital improvement program amendments.
Thank you. Are there any councilors that want to pull items off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, we would like to go immediately to ordinance on second reading and public hearing on any item.
I have to vote.
Oh, I am just rushing right through this. Counselor Martin.
I move the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. So the consent agenda has been moved by Counselor Martin, segmented by Counselor McCoy. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Now we're at ordinances on second reading and public hearings on any matter. The first one is A, 2023-35, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023. Do we have any questions from council on this ordinance? I would like to open the public hearing on ordinance 2023-35. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing no one, I would like to close the public hearing on that. Can I have a motion to pass and adopt 2023-35?
I move that we adopt 2023-35.
Second.
So Counselor McCoy moved 2023-35, segmented by Counselor Martin. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. Ordinance B is 2023-36, a bill for an ordinance concerning the funding of an arts and entertainment center, and in connection therewith, amending Chapter 4.04 of the municipal code for the city of Longmont, Colorado, increasing the city's sales and use tax rate from 3.53% to 3.62%, beginning on the first day of the sixth month prior to the projected completion date of the arts and entertainment center, authorizing an increase in the city property tax of not more than 1.9 mills for not more than 20 years, beginning with the year in which $35 million in private funding for construction has been made available to the city, and referring said tax increases to a vote of the qualified electors. Are there any questions from council, Counselor McCoy?
Oh, I didn't need to leave that on. Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Martin.
I have no questions, but I had moved to adopt ordinance O, 2023-36.
Second.
So ordinance 2023-36 has been moved by Counselor Martin, segmented by Counselor Waters.
Need a public hearing, Mayor. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm going through these very fast. Is there anybody in the public? I would like to open this ordinance up for a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this? Seeing no one, I will call, close the public hearing. And we will go with the motion that Counselor Martin made, segmented by Counselor McCoy.
No.
Waters.
One member down.
One of those ends. Let's vote. 2023-37 is Item C, a bill for an ordinance concerning the funding of libraries, and in connection therewith, amending Chapter 4.04 of the municipal code for the city of Longmont, Colorado, increasing the city's sales and use tax rate from 3.53% to 3.68% beginning January 1, 2024, authorizing an increase in the city property tax of not more than one mill for not more than 20 years, beginning with tax collection year 2024, and referring said tax increases to a vote of the qualified electors. Are there any questions from council on this ordinance? Seeing none, oops, Counselor Susie Hidagel Ferring.
Yes. So I'm bringing up a concern or inquiry that was brought to the Library Advisory Board. So I don't know if this one might be for Harold or...
Oh, no. Okay.
Do you want me to wait?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
What you doing, Tony?
Everybody busy.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Sorry, Don had everything all set up, and then it got stuck on the last presentation.
It doesn't have anything to do with images. A concern was brought up during last night's Library Advisory Board meeting around the language not specifically stating the desire to hit that preferred level of service. And I think what it was is that the board really would like to have assurances that the money that's acquired will go towards achieving according to the feasibility study.
So you have two different components in that ballot language. You have the one component that talks about the capital related to the library expansion, and then the operating expenses. And then you have the next piece of that equation that is a specific tax for additional services at the existing library, which is getting at that issue.
Okay, yeah, because I do remember, and I explained to the board that we did vote, I believe there were three options of, you know, separating it out, having, supporting the branch library, as well as attaining that preferred level of service. So it was really just reassurances that does this language capture what the feasibility study deemed us to attain that preferred level of service.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull the language up. Jim, do you have it available? So it says, "All revenues derived from the 15 1/100s of one set increase approved according to ordinance number shall be used exclusively to provide resources to fund the operation and maintenance of all libraries." Is that the right one?
Yeah.
Yep. So that's what it's, because you have the operating expense where we combined for the expansion and all libraries.
Okay, thank you.
So seeing no one else, I'll close the council comments and open the public hearing on 2023-39, 37. I turned it over.
Everything's breaking today. We have some updated visuals that we wanted to go over specifically related to the library.
Okay.
For you all to see.
The Mayor PAC members of council, John Solomon, Director for the Longmont Public Library. And I just wanted to share just a few renderings. We worked with an architect to paint a picture of a potential, how people could see themselves in a new library. And I wanted to just explain the images quickly for you.
Okay.
So that you can kind of see what you're seeing here. So these renderings are not meant for really its concept. It's more of visualizing in a library, not necessarily that these are all in one space. So it's more activities in a library, some things we have, the very popular library of things, new concepts that a library could have, such as a bike repair demonstration, or something new that we don't currently do. That's the idea with this. You still see books in there and other things going on. How do I get, I want to scroll this down. Oh, I see. It's, got it, got it. Okay. Yeah, so the second rendering, just showing some other activities. You see a children's area in the background, activities going on. In the middle there is the kind of glowing tables, a sensory table, newer concepts in libraries that are happening now. And then some classroom space in the background, a teen space with some gaming going on, and then just families working together in some open space on different activities. And then the last rendering I'd like to share is just a concept of making good use of outdoor space in a library, something that many people do now. So just some concepts going on here. There's an active mural in the background that could be worked on all the time, taken down and done again, something fun like that, a lot of seating areas, obviously open space to sit. There's a storytime you can see in the foreground going on outside. So just wanted to share some of these renderings with you, just to kind of paint a picture of how people might see themselves in a potential new library for Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. That really helps. So now I would like to open up a public comment. Is there any public that would like to comment on 2023-37 concerning the library funding? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to pass and adopt 2023-37.
I move that we adopt 2023-37.
Second.
So thank you. That's been moved by Counselor McCoy, segmented by Counselor Hidagel Ferring. Let's vote. That passes unanimously. So we'll go on to the next, 2023-39. It's a bill for an ordinance concerning funding recreation facilities, including the construction of a recreation center at Dry Creek Community Park, and in partnership with the YMCA, a recreation facility and affordable housing, and in connection therewith, amending Chapter 4.04 of the municipal code for the city of Longmont, Colorado, increasing the city's sales and use tax rate from 3.53% to 3.64% beginning January 1, 2025, authorizing an increase in the city property tax of not more than 2.78 mills for not more than 20 years, beginning with tax collection year 2024, authorizing an increase in the city property tax of not more than two mills for not more than three years, beginning when the YMCA has received a low-income housing tax credit award, authorizing a conveyance of land, and referring said tax increases and land conveyance to a vote of the qualified electors. Counselor Waters.
Thanks, Mayor PAC. Harold, could you just review, there's, there is confusion. I think there's gonna continue to be confusion about this project. And we need to take advantage of every opportunity to reduce confusion, all right? People can agree or disagree, but with, agree or disagree based on the facts of what we're pursuing. Before, there was a Y proposal, or a proposal from the Y to partner with the city. We sat here and looked at recreation, a recreation package, various combinations, everything from doing more or less with Union Reservoir to the parks around the city. And, you know, we've kind of settled in. In fact, we had settled in on the proposed rec center on the southwest part of Longmont. And there was a plan, this was before we had the conversation, by the way, there was a plan for doing something at Centennial Park with the Centennial Pool. Could you review, or Jeff said, what that plan was, what it was gonna cost to do what was proposed? So what was proposed and what it was gonna cost?
So I'm gonna take you back in time. This was actually part of the discussion when we brought this forward to council in terms of what questions we were gonna put out to poll the community. And the plan at that time was to put about $8 million into the Centennial location, but it really was going to be eliminating the pool facility.
Let's just pause right there. It was gonna cost $8 million to demolish a pool. Why would we demolish that pool?
Well, we wouldn't demolish the structure, but we would demolish the pool, and we would put court space based on the current condition that the pool is in.
So people need to understand that that pool, it has served its lifespan, or it's, you know, existed for, we've put substantial money... you know, existed for, we've put substantial money the last couple of years into trying to cobble it together or patch it together, as someone said recently. And that pool does not have a long future. Regardless of what happens here, that pool is not going to continue unless we do something there as a result of this proposal.
Correct.
All right, keep going.
And I'm going to look to Jeff on this. I think Jeff worked with some folks and ran some numbers. And I think to actually restructure the pool to where it would have a longer lifespan, the 50-year lifespan that we talked about in terms of the other buildings we're working on, that number came in at, what, 25 million?
That's what I recall.
23 million in order to actually redo the pool.
So $8 million to demolish, 23 million dollars to replace.
Correct. And so in that, I kind of want to touch on a couple of pieces. I don't know who was on council during that time, but there was a period three years ago, three or four years ago, where the pool, we actually had to shut it down for most of the summer just because of issues that we were seeing.
I was on the council. Several others were.
So that's part of all of that. So what happened was, as part of the polling questions, you know, what we heard from the community is, you know, needing more stuff in North Longmont, really not wanting to lose a pool in that location. And the Y had been exploring this concept of affordable housing and expanding it.
Which is the Y model across the country now.
It's a model that they're shifting into. And so we had had those conversations. It didn't seem like, you know, things, and then all of a sudden, things came together where they essentially said, you know, we'd be interested in engaging in this public-private partnership. And we had to change the council comm literally on a Thursday to get it out to you all and provide that information, because it was an opportunity that we had to bring to your attention. And what that is, is creating 100 affordable housing units associated with a swimming pool, associated with an ice rink, expanded level early childcare. You know, one of the things that Chris Coker mentioned is, and it's part of the affordable housing, trying to figure out a way to look at affordable assisted living as part of that project. I don't have the list in front of me. I think Jeff may have it, but, you know, we talked about between now and probably the next month is really getting an LOI in terms of everything that we've talked about conceptually. And that's why we actually put the requirement in the ballot language that says this doesn't move forward unless they get the low-income housing tax credits, because that really is the first piece of the puzzle. And as part of that conversation, the Y will continue operating. And we will have, we talked about in the last discussion, the rate structures that will exist for Longmont residents and passholders that will be different than non-Longmont residents, really capturing the expenditure of public funds into this. And so, but the Y will operate it. The Y also talked about the Longmont Housing Authority managing the affordable housing units. And then there will be an exchange of land, of which the site of the existing Y actually will convert to the city. And then if the city can utilize that, we've talked about utilizing it for attainable housing, homeownership, affordable housing, you know, some combination in that. And so it's a broader development in that area. I don't know if that covered what you.
Well, I just want to go back and review. We were contemplating asking the voters to approve a middle levy increase to generate $8 million to demolish the pool and replace it with sports courts. Along comes a proposal, we didn't initiate the proposal, from the Y. By the way, why is it now we talk about the Y and not the YMCA?
Jeff, you want to help me with that? Because I probably forgot. They rebranded because, you know, what I can say generally and what Chris talked about with you all is I think there was a connection to the, you know, the beginnings of the Y and the religious underpinnings. But their mission has changed dramatically, and so they are now branded as the Y.
It is no longer a faith connection with the Y.
That's what Chris Coker said to the council.
But I think that's important to reinforce, because we're going to hear that. The Y stands alone as a 501 whatever, C3 or C4, I'm not certain which kind of nonprofit corporation, disassociated from a religious or faith connection. All right? People need to understand that. So the Y proposes to us, for $4 million more, right, you were willing to ask for eight, for $4 million more, we'll partner with you to deliver a full-service recreation center. It would cost us one-sixth of the cost of what we're willing to do on the west side of town, that we're asking voters to approve, right, to do on the west side of town. One-sixth the cost for a full-service recreation center, clean ice and lap lanes and whatever, expanded childcare, and 100 units of affordable housing. With a decision to be made about what happens when that property swap occurs, when the Y deeds property to the city, a city council at some point in time will decide, based on a recommendation from the city manager, what to do with that land. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just hard, it's hard for me to imagine how, if people understand the full dimension of this, how anybody could say that's anything other than a great deal. In fact, you've worked out the issues in the interim for Longmonters to use the Y, and the discounted rate when a new service or a new facility is constructed, and the council would have the opportunity to create a scholarship program along with what the Y does, to reduce cost access for kids who live anywhere in town, right?
Correct.
My last observation would be, as we get into this discussion, and then I'll be quiet. I don't know what the prospects are for this ballot question or any of them, right? We polled. This one's complicated enough, it's hard to know if there's going to be organized opposition. We certainly are, you know, reading the negatives in the TC line every day. But from my perspective, neither, the Southwest Rec Center or what's been proposed by the Y, has the chance to be supported by the public if we don't put them both together. We need both parts of town supporting both of these proposals to have a full array of recreation amenities for kids and their, and parents and the seniors across the city. And I think the only way that gets done is if you keep those two items together and ask, and then just play hard, campaign. Those get physical Longmont. The group that's come together to organize around this just needs to get busy and make certain that they can bring this across the finish line.
So I find it interesting, the history of the YMCA was, and the YWCA, was first a boarding house for young men and women who came to the city from farms or whatever to work. So, yep, so building affordable housing, to me, just takes them back to their roots. This is what they were doing from the onset. So one of the questions from the public, though, and I see the gentleman sitting there, was dividing them. So I was wondering, Jeff, wasn't it the PRAB board that suggested that we put these two together? So that's the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, for those who don't know what the PRAB means.
Mayor Jeff, and Members of Council, Jeff Friesen, Director of Recreation and Culture. Yes, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board did recommend putting them together. They did also recommend putting the rec center, recreation projects with the library. The library board voted to have them separate.
Okay. And what was the reasoning behind that from the PRAB?
I think that, I think Councilmember Waters hit that, is that it really provides a full-rounded recreation opportunity for our community. I think there's concern with the new rec center going out at Dry Creek and leaving the north end of town without anything. I think that the project with the Y and the new rec center really provides a well-rounded opportunity of recreation throughout our community. And I guess the only thing I would say is, short of truly in North Longmont, which I would say would be in an area of town that the City of Longmont does not own property, so we really don't have an opportunity to consider anything in that area of town.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because that is, that has been a question that people have been asking us for a very long time, is why don't we put it here? Why don't we put it there? Because we don't own the land. So thank you for that.
Well, and if I can jump in, I think developable land.
Right.
In that area is few and far between when you really look up there. And so I think it's not only we don't have it, I think it's where is there a space that you can put something like that?
Correct. Okay. So seeing no one else on council that wants to comment, I would like to open this up for public comment on 2023-39.
Mayor, before we do that, we did have some updated images.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought we were done with that.
Mayor PAC, Members of Council, Ben Wagner, Recreation and Golf Superintendent. There we go. Thank you. Just like the library, I'd like to show a couple pictures. These are just a continuation from the work that we had done to show you guys tonight. Based on the Dry Creek site, this one showing a fitness area, taking advantage of the views at that site. Pretty standard stuff for us. We did, we did not show an aquatic picture, I will say, because if we show anything, we're going to get the wrong thing for somebody. So this one shows the outside of front entrance. This one's new for you. Also, again, showing the great views that we have out there, taking advantage of the scenery, what's going on, the entrance. I want to emphasize again, this is a rendering of something potential that could be out there. And lastly, to go very quickly tonight, this is the updated one of the outside, showing the potential for that site with the west-facing views. The idea is that the right side there be the aquatics, looking out towards the west and with various levels that take, again, take advantage of those great views. Are there any questions with these? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I will open it up to the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to pass and adopt 2023-39?
I'll move approval of ordinance 2023-39.
Second.
Thank you. That was moved by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. That carries unanimously. Thank you. Before we move on, I would like to take this opportunity, since we discussed all three of these ballot issues, I would like to move to direct staff to draft a resolution of support for our three ballot issues on the Arts and Entertainment Center, Library and Recreation Center, and the partnership with the YMCA for Affordable Housing and Recreation Center. Okay. So Counselor McCoy seconded that. Let's vote.
Mayor, could you restate? I've just voted, but I'd like to see it again.
I move to direct staff to draft a resolution of support for our three ballot issues on the Arts and Entertainment Center, Library and Recreation Center, and the partnership with the YMCA for Affordable Housing and Recreation Center.
We're going to get a chance to vote on a resolution to encourage all Longmonters to support these ballot questions. I can hardly wait for that resolution.
There you go. Thank you. There were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we're going to go to general business. We have nothing on general business. Final call public invited to be heard. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to final call public invited to be heard? Seeing no one, I will close final call public invited to be heard. And we're now at mayor and council comments. Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor PAC. I just wanted to thank everybody that came out for the International Gaelic Football and Hurling Competition that was out at Sandstone Ranch. It was an amazing activity, and I think it's something that really showed our Parks and Rec program and our park there in just such a fabulous way. And so I hope someday we can do that again.
Thank you. Counselor Yarborough. Whoops, Counselor Hidalgo Ferring, sorry.
Thank you. So actually, I have a couple of things. One to announce, and so folks can get it on their calendar now, on September 15, which is a Friday, from 10 to 11, at the museum courtyard, the museum will be kicking off their Capitol campaign for their museum expansion. So I would highly encourage residents who are available at that time to please stop by and you can get a vision of what the plans are going to be for that expansion. They're doing great work. So, yeah, and, you know, they're in need of collecting the funds. One of the things that we did poll, funding for the museum from a ballot initiative, so they took this route to allocate funds through a different avenue. So, you know, the community can come together. That would be great to see all there. The other thing is, I kind of wanted to update council on this as well. I have the, so I'm the liaison for the youth council, so I was there this afternoon. And I got to see the kids, they actually expanded the youth council rather than their, like, 10 or 12. They now have 24 members. So it was really exciting to see the number of members. And a lot of our area schools are already represented. Before, it was just maybe one or two schools, and Iwatt Silver Creek were typical. But now, you know, they have Skyline Kids coming in, Longmont High Kids coming in. So it's getting, we're getting a more diverse group. What they were doing today was they were actually scoring the applications that came in for the Metro Stadium Fund. So looking at that money, and they listed their priorities based on surveys, based on the surveys that, the information that Councilmember Yarborough and I had pushed out, as well as the mayor's summit, on what were the priorities that our youth really want to see in their community. And they highlighted four different areas. Activities and services that promote health, well-being, and support mental health among the youth, activities to promote education, skill-building, life skills, sports and promotion of physical activity, as well as STEAM, arts, nature, science, technology, engineering, math, as well as esports. That was something that kind of kept resurfacing in all of the surveys that were done, and as well as when the students presented at the mayor's summit. So they're working really hard. They're still in the process. There's still several applications. I believe that they received 57 applications. And allocating the total number of what people are asking for, it would go over $2 million. So they're really having to be critical and really think, you know, who is this going to, who's this going to address? Is it going to meet the needs of a few or more? So really, the kids are working really hard and asking really critical questions. It was amazing to see them work on that. And I will, so Councilmember Yarborough and I attended yesterday afternoon a, and I'll let her speak more of it, because she has the article, with Congressman Nagus and the Democratic House Leader, Hakeem Jeffries, were in CU yesterday. And they did a, just a roundtable conversation on gun violence prevention. And it was amazing. There were, our DA was there, we had the president of the CU system, as well as other representatives from, we had a father, and this, the one that kind of hit me really hard, was the father of Daniel Hauser, who was shot and killed at the Columbine shooting in 99. And looking at when this, you know, just looking at that particular event and where we're at today, you know, the message was, and I totally hardly agree with it, is, you know, we need to go beyond political divide, beyond politi, we need to be able to work together, to have these conversations, and really come up with reasonable solutions that will address mental illness, safe gun storage, you know, all the things that need to happen. It's not going to be a one bill or one policy that's going to fix this. It's going to be multiple. It's not going to be one group of people that's going to make it happen. It's going to be many. And there are going to be arguments and different ideologies, but we really have to come together, because, you know, people are dying, our children are dying, and we have to do something. So it was very compelling, but I'll pass it over to Councilmember Yarborough for that.
Councilmember Yarborough.
You said it all.
Oh, no.
Say nothing. No, it was, it was really good. Very appreciative to have been in the room. So they had So, they had the president of the NAACP for the Colorado NAACP, she was there. Blue Rising Together was there, the president of Front Range was there. These are people that were on the panel who were talking about issues in, with the congressman and the Democratic leader, House Democratic leader. And so, the Center for the Study and Prevention of Violence was there, Moms Demand Action was there, and the chancellor of CU was, was there as well, of course, as the DA. But mainly what I, I took notes on what they talked about. The DA, what his main question was, how, how are the, are youth getting guns? How, why, and how are they getting guns in our community, especially in the city of Longmont? And so, that was the question he asked, and how can we prevent that moving forward? And of course, I think universal background checks was brought up by these organizations. They said, we need to have universal background checks. And they brought up the Bipartisan Gun Violence Prevention Act, the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, and that, that was the first major gun violence prevention legislation in over 30 years. So, they're, basically, they were saying that we're progressing, making progress, but of course, we all know we got a long way to go. So, it was really good information to hear the panel. We didn't get to ask questions, but it was good to hear these organizations bring up their concerns and about the shootings in the schools, and how can we prevent it within our own communities? And so, they wanted leaders that are in the community definitely to talk about these issues and how we can help with prevention. And I also want to say, the King Penny, the free weight gym over there in Big Five Parking Lot, Sunday, this is their last day for free gym, and they will be providing free haircuts. So, that's Sunday, from 8:00 to 12:00, they'll be providing free haircuts. So, if you have kids that need haircuts, bring them out there between 8:00 and 12:00. I myself will be, as the YWCA, providing free snow cones for kids, and, and so, we'll be out there. So, we'd love to see you out there, get some free haircuts, and they'll also be providing free burritos for breakfast, too, for the kids. So, I just wanted to shout that out. That's it.
Councilor Waters.
Is it, are free haircuts only for kids? Or for, can adults, can adults like me come and get a free haircut?
Absolutely, especially adults like you.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, that's funny. Seeing no one else in the queue, we'll go to the city manager remarks.
Mayor, council, I did forget something earlier. We, on the agenda, we had a Historic Preservation Commission appeal for today. There was a posting issue. I, with council's permission, we'd like to convert the September 5th meeting from a study session to a regular session. It's not going to change anything other than we'll add that item, and that'll be in addition to budget.
Do we need a vote? Let's just give consensus. Is that okay? Thumbs up for our city manager? Fantastic. Yep, that's a go.
No more comments.
City attorney?
No comments, mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Don't say opposed. Before you all go off, we got to say this.[1679.41]